Thanks, Chris.
I call to order the regular city council meeting for August 4th. Remind everybody to please silence your cellphones so we aren't disturbed during the meeting. And our first item on the agenda is roll call.
Blessam.
Here.
Fuller.
Here.
Janzer.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Pittner.
Here.
Samuelson.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is the mayor's report. I will be brief. Since the last meeting, we, there was a MPO meeting for the Central North Dakota MPO. I attended the NOS Authority meeting, as well as a ribbon cutting for the family shelter and a discussion about the potential for a military welcome center up at the base, as well as the Fifth Bombardment Quarterly Awards at the invitation of the commander. So, are there any questions on that report? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Item four, item 4.1, the city manager's report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as always, the city manager memo is in the packet. I would stand for any questions that the council may have at this time.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman, Blessam.
Yeah, I do have a question, Harold. I gave Lance a heads up as well. I just wanted to have him talk a little bit about the item in there that refers to additional road and sidewalk type work that we would be doing towards the end of our budget dollars. So, just to kind of restate it, Lance, you know, in the, in there, it says, "Staff will be additioning, designing additional small projects and seeking quotes from contractors to utilize the budgeted street maintenance dollars." We went up in '25. We got a lot of money flowing through that system, so just wanted to hear from you, kind of what that looks like. We must have had, you know, our big projects used a bunch of the money, and now we've got the ability to do a few more things. So, I just wanted to understand priority and how you guys work on those projects.
Of course. Mr. Mayor and Alderman Blessam, just a little recap about how we approach maintenance versus capital. So, capital, we try to get the, you know, the lowest project cost possible utilizing the budget that's, that's provided. On the maintenance side, our goal, just like Price is Right, you try to go right up to the, the number but not go over. And so, we want to utilize all of our maintenance dollars. We got great bids this year. DOT didn't let out as much work, so we took advantage of that. We budgeted a little bit more money for a potential of tariffs. We didn't know what that was all going to mean for asphalt prices. At the time, it didn't have a great effect, so we were able to realize some savings from that. We had factored in some contingency for a couple of our projects, one of them being the North Broadway Frontage Road. Back in the day, they overlaid over the top of the curb. We didn't know how well that old asphalt was going to come off the top. And worst-case scenario, we're looking at having to replace potentially a half a mile of curb. So, we held some additional monies back in the event that we would have some issues like that. Turned out, all of our projects came in right around budget, and so we have about $600,000 left to work with. And so, we're kind of in that point now in the summertime where if we do the traditional design and then public bid and then award to council and contracting, we wouldn't have very much time left in the construction season. What we're able to do is, is look at isolated projects throughout different parts of the community, put together a quote package, and as long as, as those quotes are under $200,000, which is the threshold in state law, then we're able to award that work in an expedited amount of time. Still gives all of our local contractors a, a chance to bid on that work because we give them all the same package, except we can say, "Hey, I want a price back in two weeks," and then we take the lowest quote and, and award the work. We're looking for areas around town that probably don't have any, any sidewalks, so we don't have to design 88 ramps, so it's a lot of mill and overlay work. And, and areas that don't have sidewalks and that have newer utilities, PVC water mains, sewer mains, that sort of thing, so we don't run the risk of public works having to come in in a few years and do water main replacements. So, it narrows down our list of, of places that we can go, but we do have a few of these identified. We just kind of set them off to the side. In the event that we do have dollars available, we can put something out on the street relatively quickly.
Okay. If I can continue, Mark?
Yes.
Yeah, and so Lance, thanks for that. And I think, you know, as, as we've gone back and forth on a bunch of these things over the last year since I've been on council, I'm getting to know the processes better, getting to understand them better. And you answered a lot of the, the thoughts that I had, you know, because again, channeling the, the taxpaying public, what we, what we don't want to get to is, "Oh, we got some extra. We better find a way to spend it." This actually does the opposite of that, right? Because we go and get things done that should decrease our burden as time goes by. Is that, is that a good way to think of that? Because the, the point that I'm going for is the fact that we're able to do that, and you guys were able to get great bids done and get things done on time and on budget, that's a great thing. And as a long-term goal, that's actually helping the situation to pull down what our future needs are. Is that a good way to put that?
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Blessam, you're correct. And, and so, the roads that we're going to focus on now with these remaining budgeted funds are backlog items, right? They're, they're known needs that we have to address, but when we're putting our projects together, they didn't fit the, the budget that we had going in, or they might be a couple of years down the list. And so, when we have savings like this, we're then able to pull those projects into our work program.
Great. Thanks.
Any other questions for Lance? Okay, seeing none. Any other questions for the city manager? Seeing none, we'll move on to the city attorney's report. City attorney.
In turn, Mayor Janser, members of the council, I submitted a written report, and I can stand for any questions at this time.
I see none, so thank you for your report. Item five is consent items. I have been asked to pull item 5.13. The other items, unless somebody wishes one of them to be discussed individually, please let me know now, and we'll pull that item for individual discussion. But otherwise, the remainder would be, would typically be passed on a, on a consent motion.
I'll move the remaining items.
Second.
Moving seconded to pass the remaining items as presented. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
We will then move to item 5.13. Is there a motion?
I move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving seconded, discussion. Alderman Samuelson, you pulled this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm not going to support this item for the community survey. I'm not a big fan of surveys because it all depends on, on who you get to answer the questions, but one of my biggest reasons is, is we have one on the books that we've been using, and one of the biggest things that was on there was taxes. And one of them was property tax. And we have a budget that increases property tax by 23%. I don't think that's paying attention to the survey. I don't think it's paying attention to our citizens, and I'm not going to support it.
Further discussion. Alderman Fuller.
Thank you, Mark. I, I guess just for the council and, and members of the city, rather than paying $20,000 for a survey, because we're talking all the time about saving money, is it possible that like our public information office, I've seen them do a few surveys on Facebook and whatnot, where they can, you know, they've asked us over the last few months, "What's your favorite movie?" and different things like that, preparing everybody to vote. So, is that something that they could put online and, and see if we can get 800 people to respond on Facebook rather than paying for it?
Well, if you get 800 people and they're not randomly selected, it's not statistically valid. So, if the only people that, if the only people that respond are ones who are Facebook users, are interested in the topic, are, you know, have a pension for a particular issue, it's not, not statistically valid. It's like the Minnetonka Daily News poll, for instance, you know, you, you have a question and it's whoever is interested, so.
The thing I'll add, if I could, Mr. Mayor, I think one of the issues that I have with the, with the polling that we do, whatever types of surveys, is that we get that same effect with the poll we do. We get the same echo chamber that talks about it. Now, it's open to everybody. I'm not questioning that whatsoever, but I think, I think we get certain points of view that tend to come through that. I'm, I'm torn on this one because I, I, I'm generally a little skeptical of making public policy based on, based solely on, "Oh, well, this is number one, two, or three on the, on the list." At the same time, I, we all sit up here and advocate for hearing more from the community. And, and so, we have to have these mechanisms in place. We, I, I, so I, you know, I'm going to be a yes to pass this, but it's, it's not because I think they're foolproof. I don't think we want to take the documents that come from these, these polls and say, "Well, this is gospel. We better move right down this list and allocate funds and effort the way that they come in." Now, obviously, that's our job. That's what the council does to vet that. So, I, I think it's better to have the input than not. I just think we put a little more emphasis than we might need to when we actually use the data.
Further discussion. Alderman Olson.
Thank you. I just would like to respond to Alderman Samuelson, just for clarification for anyone that is listening. We have a proposed budget in front of us. We don't have an accepted or approved budget, so I fully anticipate that the numbers are going to change. So, I don't want everyone in Minnetonka to think that their taxes are necessarily going up because we haven't had that discussion.
Further discussion. If not, let's go ahead and vote on this. It's been moved and seconded.
The motion passed four to two with dissent from Fuller and Samuelson.
Very well. That takes us to section six, which is our action items. 6.1 is a budget amendment to move funds to medical professional services. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Moving and seconded, discussion. Alderman Blessam.
Yep. Chief Kelly, can you just come and talk us through sort of the, how we got to this place? Because again, I, to me, this felt all along like there were priorities. I'm not quite getting how we got to the point where we need to move money around to pay for it.
Alderman, or, I'm sorry, Mayor Janzer, Alderman Blessam. This resulted from, we paid the Cortico app out of this line item, which was medical, which we would normally do if it had been budgeted in there. We decided to move forward with the Cortico app, but that it was a, something that we felt that we needed to get done. We had a lot of medical physicals that were done this year for new hires and stuff like that. We are asking, we originally wanted to have the reimbursement from the medical physicals that comes back from WSI, going back into this line item where it came out of, but that has been told we can't do that. So, that's why we're a little over. Right now, I think we're like $20 over. So, we were just making sure that there was enough money in there for the rest of the year.
Okay. And if I can continue, so.
Go ahead.
The Cortico mental health app is, is a priority, right? That's what we're trying to do. It was budgeted in '25 as part of this item. It's budget, is it budgeted in '26 right now?
Mayor Janzer, Alderman Blessam, no, it is not. It was something that was cut out for '26. It was not budgeted for '25. We're currently looking at that grant that's on the, one of the next ones. That is for that Cortico app, to pay for that.
Okay. So, I, I think I'm missing something along the way here then, and I apologize. It's perfectly possible I voted for an item in the last year. That would have done exactly what I'm about to ask. But if it was not budgeted in '25, how did we implement it?
Mayor Janzer, Alderman Blessam, I brought it forward to this body and asked if we could move forward the Cortico app.
So, that's, that's what I wanted to make sure of, is that we, that's what we did. And, and again, I apologize. I don't remember that, but that is the path that we took. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for the chief? Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's time to vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
That takes us to item 6.2. 6.2 is regarding concurrence on a purchase price for a flood buyout at 1310 Burdick Expressway East for $1,100,000. Is there a motion?
For the purpose of discussion, I will move approval.
Is there a second? All right, moving and seconded, discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Rob.
Thank you. I guess my first question is, is we have three properties up tonight, and all three of these properties, we're paying over our 15% extra allotment. And some of the reasonings I'd heard is because eminent domain is expensive to go through and everything like that. I guess I would ask the city attorney, Steph, in your opinion, we're paying on this property about $200,000 over the appraised value, and on Mr. Brecky's next property, we're paying $170,000 over appraised value. So, we're going to spend almost $400,000 extra. Do you believe if we had to go to eminent domain, that our legal fees for him and us would cost us $400,000?
Mayor and Alderman Fuller, so typically in eminent domain procedures, when they go through court, we are paying both the city's attorney's fees, which is a contractor in these situations, and we're also paying the property owner's attorney's fees. So, it's not just one set of attorney's fees that are being paid. That being said, I would say, was the number 400,000?
Just under 400,000.
Dollars for one eminent domain case?
Between the two properties. It was 170 and 200.
It, it seems extensive. Without seeing the file, like, it seems like a fairly rich legal bill for those, but I, I defer that response to Mr. Plank. There may be more going on with these properties that I'm not necessarily seeing on the surface.
Okay.
Thank you, Steph. Mayor Janzer, Alderman Fuller, and members of the council, in addition to those fees, any eminent domain procedure could last two years, one year, two years, which could really delay the project. We do have demolition that we would like to get done soon, so the project could keep on schedule. So, that was another factor that played into this. So, coming to an agreement with them, yes, it's higher than what we, what we would like to pay. However, with all the circumstances weighed, I felt that it was sufficient.
So, so just to clarify, and if I may, Mayor Janzer, so the amount that's on top of the appraised value includes the demolition of any structures on the property as well?
It does not.
Okay. So, there would be the demolition on top of the price that's being paid to the property owners and the 15%, that is it 15%?
Mayor Janzer and members of the council, that is a city policy that was established in 2015 when we were in the height of acquisitions. HUD has no regulations saying how much we can offer over the, the appraised value, but the city did set a value of 15% or $15,000 to come for council approval.
City manager.
If I may just add one other point for consideration here as well, and that is, if we go to the eminent domain, both parties would present their appraisal, and the city still has the risk that the judge may not go with the city's appraisal. They could go with the property owner's appraisal, and so, you would be awarding the higher appraised value plus the city paying attorney's fees going forward. So, I don't know what the, the property owner's appraisals are of these properties, but that is one of the risks that you potentially face, although at this point, the city has had high success in its eminent domain cases of, of winning close to our appraised value.
Alderman Fuller.
I, I guess to Harold's question, have we seen other appraisals besides the ones that we had come in from the company out of Bismarck?
Mayor Janzer and Alderman Fuller, no. So, this was an appraisal that was done, and it had a secondary review, just as the process predicates.
But, I mean, to Harold's point or question, we haven't seen anything from them on appraisals on their own or anything like that?
That is correct.
Okay.
Alderman Olson.
Thank you. So, if this does not pass, what happens?
Mayor Janzer, Alderman Olson, we would go back to the drawing board with the individuals and present a case to them and see what their feelings are and possibly have to take that next step if we cannot come to a amicable agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Fuller.
I, Chris, just help me out here, I guess, and, and a little bit of an auditory. A couple meetings ago, we got presented with where we're going to try and save four and a half million dollars by changing MI9 a little bit and cutting some people out. If we're trying to save money, I guess, my question is, have, have we done this with other homes? Have we paid in excess of appraisal to other people in the city of Minnetonka when we've been going through this process?
Mayor Janzer, Alderman Fuller, yes. It has been a while since we have done that, though. When my predecessor, Mr. Zakian, was here, they, they did have that, and they didn't, that's where the memo came from, and his, he outlined it and brought it before council. It had been a while. During the height of acquisitions, that was a, a practice that, yes, we did have.
Okay. I can remember a number of those occurring, you know, in circumstances. Alderman Olson.
Thank you. I'll just add to that. For about four years, we had an appeals committee where all of these were dealt with by a committee that was made up of council members and realtors, lending agencies, people that would have experience in dealing with acquisitions and the value of properties. And if residents were unsatisfied with the amount that was offered, they would bring it to the appeals committee. And we did always require another appraisal to even consider increasing the number. What ended up happening was a lot of people then started having representation by attorneys, and we felt that was not really the role of that committee. So, that's when that authority was given over to the NDR director to do those negotiations and to bring the recommendations back to us.
Alderman Samuelson.
So, Chris, are there any other, is there like relocation also that would be for the homes or the businesses that we're talking about here?
Mayor Janzer and Alderman Samuelson, so for the residential property of 7009 West Central, there would be moving expenses. They can either move on their own or have a mover do that, which would be covered during, during the URA, Universal Relocation Act, does provide that. For the other two, they have tenants in there. So, the tenants, we are in the process of going through and getting their information and finding them places to live. We have contacted at least four of the individuals, and one of them has actually moved out yesterday. So, we're going through the process of getting them out of the building so we can close on it and that we can start our demolition and site restoration for, for future construction.
Thank you.
Alderman Blessam.
Chris, do we have, and those on council that have been through this multiple times, do we have a history? One of the things that I, that seems to me is that the commercial buildings are notoriously hard to put values on. I mean, we, when we bought the building that we own, you know, we had one appraisal that was $300,000 less than another one. It, it's just hard to do. So, I suspect there's a factor here, but the, the home that's involved, to me, seems very straightforward. We've got lots of data. We're doing a lot of work on that. And so, for that also to be in that 30% range, to me, is interesting. You know, I'm always going to be an advocate for these homeowners. I, I always think of the, the person who raised their kids in this house, and we're, we're asking them to move, right, for the better of all. So, I want them on the right side of it, but this, this seems strong to me. And so, if. Any comment either way on that?
Yep, Alderman Blessam. So, with the residential property, so, we pay, so the replacement housing cost, that factored into it as well. Now, this family that was in the house, they've recently added one member, and two of the children are at the age where they do require separate bedrooms. So, instead of going from a two, three-bedroom house, a four-bedroom house was more conducive for them. And considering that they just recently renovated it, that was also a factor as well, too.
Alderman Fuller.
Chris, can you help me? I looked at both appraisals, and I didn't see in there anywhere where they did the comparable sales portion of that. Is there a reason why our appraiser didn't use the comp sales? I mean, I, I get that this is, we're not looking to sell these, but I, I'm trying to figure out why he didn't see what comparable properties we're selling for, so we at least had an idea.
Mayor Janzer, Alderman Fuller, I don't have an answer for that. Typically, in appraisers, appraisals, they do have those comp properties.
And who was the appraiser that was used, you know?
Out of Bismarck.
Yes.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
Any further questions for Chris? Any further questions for Chris? Okay, it's seen none at this time. Thank you, Chris. Further discussion? Seeing, seeing none, um, let us vote, we have a motion and a second.
The motion failed two to four with dissents from Blessam, Fuller, Pitner, and Samuelson.
Okay. That takes us to 6.3, which is a sales tax ordinance, ordinance amendment, public safety amendment.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Blessam.
I'd like to move option two.
A second.
Moved and seconded for option two. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, um, one of the reasons why I think number two is, is the optimal way to go about this is there, you know, we had some recommendations from staff about how GASBEE looks at this, which is the government's stand, accounting standards. And public safety, if you read the definitions in the GASBEE standards, fits this quite well for what I believe the intent of the discussion and the motion is to begin with, which is to fund police, fire, dispatch. Even in the GASBEE standards, animal control, which, you know, in our case is a part of, is a part of the police department. And so I think that that is a nice fit, and, and while I understand the other thoughts of the other options, I think this fits the intent. One of the things that I love about this proposal is it's, to me, it's a pull forward from discussions that have been on council over the last couple of years. The idea that police and fire are a core service for what we're doing and what we're trying to take care of as a city, and to provide dedicated funding, though sales tax can be a little flawed and cyclical, we got to be careful with that. We don't want to say that it's a stable funding source, because that's not the point. What it is to me is it's, it's, it's an addition or, or an alternative funding source, and it is something that can be dedicated there. And so for me, this is such a great way to take those council thoughts and pull them forward in today's reality, and to reallocate those funds to take care of those that are taking care of us on the streets every single day. And so I will be supporting this wholeheartedly. I think this is the absolute right approach that we should take.
Further discussion? Alderman Olson.
So that I'm understanding this correctly, all of the, the proceeds from the half cent would go to police and fire, so there would not be a carve-out for economic development? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, so as drafted, I see the city attorney shaking her head, yes, that was the intent, and that is the draft.
Yes, with option two, that's, that's how that would be written. And so, like Alderman Blessam mentioned, the GASBEE standards has a really broad definition for public services. And so it wouldn't just be police and fire, police, fire, dispatch, animal control, everything that would fall within their definition would qualify.
If I may continue, um, looking back at some of the history related to these sales tax pennies, they've been approved by the voters. And each time, they have been approved to support economic development in some form or fashion. And I feel very uncomfortable now, one meeting after this was introduced, to make that dramatic of a change. We haven't given the public much of an opportunity to hear about this or to give us their feedback. And while I remain a staunch supporter of our, our public services, I, I feel that completely cutting out economic development is not the right decision at this point, because I just feel that it is so important to hear from those that are impacted by that. And so tonight, I, I could not support that. I would rather truly that we didn't vote and that we tabled it and, and gave it a little bit more time. And I guess I will put that in the form of a motion, and I would, I would like to table this until a later meeting.
Motion to table. Second, is there a second?
I'll second it, so we can vote on it.
Okay. Moving seconded that we table this and, uh, until.
Is there a specific timeframe in which you'd like for this to come back, or just?
What does our first meeting in September look like, how full is it?
Um, the only thing that I think council has asked for us to bring back at the first meeting in September is possibly the alcohol ordinance? Unless anyone else knows of anything else that's supposed to be brought back.
That's the, that's the one that I recall is on deck for September.
And I would guess there could maybe be some budget discussions.
Certainly, and, so I think that the first meeting in September is appropriate, because I do think that this falls into all of our budget discussions. But I really want to give people an opportunity to be able to give us some feedback, so my motion would be first meeting in September.
Mr. Mayor, is the, is the motion to table debatable?
Yes.
So if I could, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
You know, I, I think this is fine. One comment I did want to make about timing, I find it interesting that this item by staff, who did a fabulous job of putting together, including multiple options, and so, well done. This item was turned around in two weeks, when we've had other items that this body has asked for that have taken seven months to turn around. I mean, we looked at reserve levels that I asked for during the budget session last October, and we took action on that in May. So while I understand that, you know, the timing maybe feels a little bit quick, I was actually surprised that we were able to turn it around. At the same time, you know, to me, this is something that's been debated on council over the last couple of years. I, you know, Paul, when you were president, this was, this was an important part of, of your letter to the people. And so for those that believe that we need to somehow hold on to the dedicated funding for economic development, I guess I would ask, if you can support a half cent when we add it to the people's burden, but you can't when it's replaced, then we got to look at priorities. Because then the priority isn't supporting fire and police, it's making sure you bring in more money. And that's on the backs of the people, that's where that tax comes from. This isn't a matter of saying, well, you know, that is our priority, but only if we have enough. No, they are our first priority, and that's exactly what this does. So I'm not going to support the motion to table. I think we're ready to move forward with it, and I think that we should go ahead and do that. If we don't, if we do decide to table, that's fine, and we'll take it up and have that discussion at that point. The other thing I want to point out is that while removing the 15%, and just for context, it's a little over $2 million in the 2025 budget. That would be dedicated to economic development, be a little bit more than that in next year's budget. Those dollars, the fact that that dedicated stream is no longer there doesn't mean whatsoever that we can't spend money on, on economic development. It simply means that we have to do it from the general fund and use those funds in an appropriate fashion. And so what it will do is it will make us have conversations about things like, well, if we have to do a roof on the police station, and that's going to cost us $2 million, maybe the dollars that we're using for economic development right now need to get foregone for a couple of years. Or maybe we need to adjust what that thinking looks like. Today, what we do is we say, nope, economic development goes first. Those dollars get their dollars, those, those teams get their dollars to come through. And then if police, if the roof on the police station needs to fall back from there, it falls back. That's how we go about it today, because of the dedicated stream. This allows us to really, truly put our money where our mouth is and make those things a priority by dedicating the dollars coming through the sales tax pennies. And so we'll, we'll have a vote on whether to table it and whether to take it up at a future meeting, but I think that the decision here is clear on what the priorities are.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Fuller.
Thank you. You know, this was my, my motion, and I, I guess, Lisa, I'm going to talk directly to you, because you say, we got to make sure that, you know, the people have told us what they want. We literally have an employee in the city that we pay to do economic development. We have the chamber that we give almost $700,000 a year to, to do economic development. And then we take $2.2 million of the sales tax penny, and we set it aside. And two years ago, we didn't even have a place to put it. So we bought wayfinding signs, and we've created the facade program and these other things, because the buckets that those, that money was supposed to go into are full and have hardly been used over the last seven years. So I, I, I guess my question to you, you know, you say, you say you're a staunch supporter of fire and PD, but you want to make sure that the facade program and the renaissance program survive instead of making sure that they get all their officers and all their firefighters and their equipment and everything else. I'm, I'm just, I'm stunned by that, because I think if you went out in the community and asked everybody individually, which would you rather have? Who, who should fight over our dollars? Fire and PD, or the people that want us to redo their buildings? I'm pretty sure that they would tell you the people that want us to redo their buildings should be the one fighting for the dollars, not fire and PD. And, and I mean, I didn't, yeah, I won't, I won't vote to table this, because I, I, I think this is absolutely absurd, that we would sit here as a community and say, you know what? We want to make sure that the economic develop, the economic development dollars that we pull every year go there, even if we don't have a use for them, even if we don't have a place to put them, because the buckets are full. We want to make sure we get them rather than give them to fire and PD. I, I don't even know what to think about that, be, to be honest.
Alderman Olson.
Just a rebuttal, I certainly did not prioritize that, and you're putting words into my mouth, so I would respectfully ask that you do not do that. I think you're right in the respect that we will hear that police and fire are a priority over economic development. I truly do. But until we've given people the opportunity to give us input on something that they've, they approved through a vote, through an election, I don't think that it's our, our place to make the decision. I want to give them that month to give us the input.
Thank you, Alderman Olson. I, I want to just make sure everybody understands that, um, the, the pieces of that half penny are property tax relief. So, you know, in essence, you, you could say, well, um, you know, we're already supporting police and fire with property tax, so that's kind of a, kind of a substitution. It's not really necessarily a gain, because, um, uh, somewhere, somewhere else, the property tax needs to, uh, needs to even out. Uh, and the, and the other, um, part of it, uh, which is improvements, in the 26 budget, contains a number of items that, uh, we have tried to accomplish every, every year, such as upgrading and replacement of our traffic signals on a scheduled, um, scheduled methodology. And, um, if, if the, um, if the change that's moved and seconded is approved, that money will be gone, and that $400,000 worth of improvements will either be canceled or will need to be funded from some other source. So I just want everybody to make sure you understand that that's what's in play here. Any further discussion? Alderman Samuelson. Alderman Pitner.
Okay, so, yeah, a lot of, a lot of things to unpack here, because this is, this is, we're making this conversation about economic development, but to Mark's point, this is property tax relief, this is improvements. There's a lot more in this 50% of, of a penny than, than, than just economic development. So I kind of want to say, let's, let's call it what it is. This is, this is, this is an attempt to, to get the city out of economic development. And just for, for the record, the city does not have a staff member that, that handles economic development. That position was cut through last year's budget. And, and again, I, I agree, I don't think we should have, like, it's difficult, right, to sit here and say, you know, either people get their buildings done, or you, you support your fire and police. It's, we're, we're oversimplifying this, like, a great deal. And, and, and again, so, can I, can I offer an amendment to the, to, or in addition to the, the, uh, motion to table? To provide more direction to staff if it is tabled?
I, I think you could. It, it just depends on, it's not exceeding the motion to, like, table it, so right now, it's until September.
I would, I would continue to motion the table to, um, our September.
Second meeting.
Second meeting in September. But to include the, the direction to staff to draft language for a, a, a half-cent sales tax to be placed on the ballot in the, the June election of next year.
So it's to amend the motion to table to dra, to direct staff to draft?
Draft a resolution to be placed on the ballot in June of 2026 for a half-cent public safety sales tax.
And that would be brought back then at the.
As an option.
At the second meeting in September.
Yep.
So the motion to table, like, the way it operates is it takes Alderman Blessam's motion, and it places it on the September meeting, so his is to adopt option two. So this, it's, it's a little contradictory to that. I think, I'm not sure that they can both operate in the same way.
Yeah, if I could, Mr. Mayor, I, my thought, Steph, would be that this motion is not in order right now, but it certainly would be in order, in order during, um, our other discussion later. And so that could be brought as a separate motion to go alongside this. But on the motion to table, it wouldn't seem to be in order to me.
Okay.
Yes, I think the motion to table is whether or not to adopt option two, and so.
Okay, then let's, I'll wait for that, and, and, and we'll wait for, uh, I'll call the question on the motion to table.
Okay, the question's been called. Brings us to a vote.
Motion to table failed two to four with dissents from Blessam, Fuller, Pitner, and Samuelson.
Okay, so we still have a, uh, motion before us, to the, back to the original motion. Alderman Pitner, did you have something for?
May I provide a, um, amended motion, or would it be a motion to table, Steph, I'll look to you, a motion to table with, with included direction from, or would be still, it would still be Mike's, Mike's motion?
And I still don't know that they live in the same space. Like, I don't, I don't think that you can do a motion to table for more direction from staff as an amendment to a motion to adopt option two.
Maybe I'll put my thoughts out there, and then we can work through on how that would work.
Sure.
Okay. So again, we, we, we saw this coming when, when measure four was, and some of us still like to talk about it a lot. When measure four was proposed, we had to look at additional revenue sources. That's what, that's what, that's how it was packaged to us. Get rid of property taxes, you keep your budget, you can find different revenue sources, whether it's special assessments, whether it's fee for service, whether it's sales tax. That's how it was packaged, that's how it was delivered. We kind of got measure four now, the legislature put that in effect. We've got a cap, and that's fine, we'll work within it. Well, we can't, in my opinion, one of the cardinal sins is, is, is a business owner, one of the cardinal sins to any organization is undercapitalization, and that's what we're trying to do here. We're trying to undercapitalize our, our organization, whether it's competing interests from public safety, and yes, that is priority number one, I agree. Economic development, those things, I believe, those are what drive your sales tax. Those economic development efforts are what, what increase your sales tax. You're going to, you know, the, the programs like TRF, these, the organizations like the, um, Chamber EDC, those are the things that drive your sales tax, that, that, that improve, i- i- improve your, your, your business climate. So I would like to see, at least for the consideration, we always talk about giving it back to the voters, let the voters decide. So let's draft the resolution for a half-cent property, uh, 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 a sales tax, half-cent, to be sunset in five years, it'll align somewhat or post-nos, when we can reallocate some of those funds. And when I look at the numbers, this is how I see it. You've got the police and the fire budget. Of the salary and benefits, let's see, what I, I got to find my notes here now, so I'm a little scatterbrained, but of the non-salary and benefit expenses within those, within those, uh, departments, if we shifted the non-salary and benefits, you'd be shifting about $3.4 million to sales tax. That would be a direct reduction in the property tax bill of about $3.4 million. It would leave about approximately $2.5 million in funding that could go towards additional public safety infrastructure, a police station remodel, relocation of Fire Station One. This funding remains off the top property tax burden for citizens, and it's actually paid for, when you look at sales taxes, paid for by 30% of individuals outside of Ward County. And again, those programs that we use with, with economic development drive traffic to Minot. So again, you're, it, you're feeding the engine. I feel personally, like, when we get rid of economic development, some of those activities, it's like buying a brand-new sports car, but you can't pay for the gas to, to, to drive it. It's, to me, it's counterintuitive. So again, I, I'm not going to support getting rid of the economic development, the, the, you know, the improvements. I'm just not, and I don't think they have to compete in the same space. We were told we were going to have to do. We were told we were going to have to do this if, if measure four passed. It passed in some way, shape, or form through the legislature, it did. Whether we like to believe it or not, and anybody's lying to you saying this would, measure four would solve these problems, it wouldn't have, it would have made it a lot worse. But again, we were able to maintain our economic development activities if we look at a sales tax. It's an immediate reduction in property tax levy to, in the neighborhood of $3.4 million for taxpayers. And again, that 2.6 million can go towards other infrastructure needs that we have with public safety, or you can word the, word the ordinance or the, the, the draft language that it goes towards property tax relief. And you could get a whole $6 million in property tax, uh, relief off of the, the sales tax penny. So again, I'm not going to support the motion in place, I just, we're just, to me, we're working backwards. Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Blessom.
I, thanks. I, um, I think it's a good layout, Paul, I think that that makes perfect sense. The wonderful thing about the motion on the floor is everything you just said applies as is. The exact dollars you just said applies as is, but we don't raise the sales tax. That's the wonderful thing about doing it the way that is proposed and is on the table right now. We do it leaving the sales tax at seven and a half percent, we still fund police, we still leave those extra two and a half million dollars available to be used throughout. We do all of those same things without increasing the burden on our people right when they're telling us that they can't do it. A little while ago, we, we talked about the, the community survey. I, I, you know, maybe voted a little differently than I might have at other times, but I decided, you know what, we want to make sure we don't lose the voice of the people. The voice of the people has told us consistently they want lower taxes. They want their services taken care of and they want lower taxes. This is an opportunity to do that, it's to take care of exactly the focus the city should have and not hang another heavy weight around the necks of the taxpayers. Again, think of it this way, this isn't the taxpayers that are making 200 grand a year that are paying a little bit extra. As I've said during the Economic Development Committee meetings, this is the, the single mom of two kids who are about to send her kids back to school. She's the one paying the sales tax bill when she buys clothing for her kids. That's the person who's footing the bill to fix up buildings in downtown. And I'm not willing to do it anymore. This is a method that, you know, frankly, was not on my radar to go this direction, but man, does it make sense. And we've got people that have advocated for exactly the half cent sales tax. In fact, that's the motion that's even being considered as the next motion if this one fails. Yep, we still want the half cent to go for fire and, and public safety, but no, we want to pay extra for everybody. I, I won't do it. I mean, to me, we're taxed enough, we need to hold the line where we're at.
Further discussion? Alderman Samuelson.
Thank you. First thing I would like to comment on is Brian Billingsley's title is Community and Economic Development Director. So we do have someone in the city that works on economic development. The voters did pay or vote on the tax for economic development. And our economic development today looks very different than the last two times I voted on it, because I was around when it started. And it's totally different because we got a fund called the Magic Fund that originally what it was for, that's maxed out, and the money's sitting there. We still have that money to do economic development. And if the priority for us, I believe, is our police and fire, but if it's economic development, it can still be done. It just has to be fought for. I'm tired of the police and fire having to fight for it. Let's make it fight the other direction. That's all I'm saying. It, all can still be done, it's just, it's a priority.
Alderman Blessom.
One additional thing to add, you know, there's, there's talk about the, having the people having done this and, and created the sales tax pennies the way that they are. Uh, one thing to point out, and again, please, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, we've got them on the screen there. The first vote to create the Magic Fund was in 1990. I was still in high school. Second vote was taken in 2004, which adjusted that, which, we're now 21 years post, we are flood post, we are oil boom post, we are a completely different city than we were in 2004. If anything, our priorities are different. I, I think there's a good argument to say that this is, this is something that should be looked at, and that's why we're having this discussion, and I have my opinions on where that should go. But to say that the, the council really shouldn't take this step, I think that's exactly our role and our job. That's why we're elected. We can, we can push it on the people, we can ask them to do it, we can have the competing sides, you know, one saying support fire, actually, I guess in that case, both sides saying support fire, um, but one side saying, don't tax the people more to support fire, and we've got the means to do it without. And so, um, you know, to me, 21 years with it sitting that way, I think the council can move on the ordinance this way.
Apparently it's time to vote.
This was to approve option two.
The original motion, yes.
The motion failed three to three with dissents from Janser, Olson, and Pittner.
And that takes us to item 6.4, which is to concur on the purchase price for flood buyout at 420 15th Street Southeast for $1,300. Is there a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve for discussion purposes.
Or second.
Second.
No discussion. Apparently we're ready to vote. Please cast your votes.
The motion failed two to four with dissents from Blessom, Fuller, Pittner, and Samuelson.
Item number 6.5 is to concur on the purchase price for a flood buyout at 709 West Central Avenue for $335.
Move approval.
Second.
Moving seconded, discussion. Discussion.
The motion passed four to two with dissents from Fuller and Samuelson.
Takes us to item 6.6. 6.6 is a budget amendment for property nuisance abatements. What are your wishes?
Move approval.
Move by Alderman Olson.
Second.
Second by Alderman Pittner. I would note that, um, from reports from city staff, we've done a number of abatements of nuisance properties this year, um, and, uh, there is a list of additional properties to deal with in that regard, so that is the cause for this amendment. Any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, we'll vote on the motion.
The motion passed unanimously.
Item 6.7 is a resolution adopting a new agenda setting policy for regular and special city council meetings. And, uh, what are your wishes?
Move approval.
Move by Alderman Samuelson, second by Alderman Blessom. Any discussion? I guess I'd like to compliment the staff, uh, who were part of developing this methodology. Um, uh, I know I was interviewed by the committee that worked on this, I think Alderman Blessom was as well. And, uh, hopefully this will allow us to, um, be a little, be a little more, uh, informed in advance as we look at agendas. Any other discussion? Then let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
Item 6.8 is a, um, inspiritus grant application. Um, this is brought by the fire department to apply for a grant from, uh, local foundation. What are, what are your wishes?
I'll move approval.
Move by Alderman Samuelson. Is there a second? Second by Alderman Olson. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, uh, it's time to vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
Item 6.9 is a, um, item related to the transition of City Manager Harold Stewart. Um, this was, uh, an agreement that was, uh, the result of, uh, conversation that, um, Alderman Blessom and I had with Mr. Stewart, um, related to the, uh, timing of his, um, departure. Uh, by, by contract, he gave us 60 days notice, um, but, uh, his new employer in Washington would, uh, welcome him to arrive sooner than that 60 days. Uh, and so we have negotiated the, uh, mutual termination agreement that is, uh, within this item. Uh, and, um, uh, this has been reviewed by, uh, our city attorney and by, um, uh, Mr. Stewart's, uh, counsel, I don't know if he has attorney, but, uh, I think he's had somebody review it. So, um, uh, what are your wishes?
I'd move approval.
Move by Alderman Blessom.
Second.
Second by Alderman Samuelson. Is there any discussion? Alderman Blessom.
Yep, thanks, Mark. Um, so a couple of things with this. Number one, just so the public understands it, and also to my colleagues on council, I know you guys understand the processes that we have to go through sometimes. In a perfect world, we all would have been involved in this kind of discussion. Public meeting laws do not allow that. So this was something that was, that I felt strongly about towards the end of last week, and I initiated the conversation working with the city attorney. I brought, um, Acting Mayor Janser in because I felt it important that at least two council members be involved in the discussion. And so I just wanted to lay out a little bit of my thoughts on, on why I pushed for this direction. And, and in, in fact, it's, it's out of respect for Harold and the work that he's done, I'm going to come back to that in a minute. Um, but I wanted to make sure that if we could come to a mutual agreement that made sense for both parties, that there was something better than Harold essentially working out through September 19th, that we could get as a city what we were looking for and make sure that we had a good succession plan, which is already laid out in how our contracts work with our employees, but also give him the opportunity, if it made sense for him, to work with where he was headed. And I want, I felt strongly that that was good. I mean, one of the core tenants of, of management, you, you want to be careful when you have an employee leaving. I don't feel any of those worries with Harold, but just as a general sense. In fact, there's many, there's many organizations out there that the moment that there's a notice, employment ends immediately. And so I think it's a, it's a credit that we were able to work towards a mutual agreement that makes sense here. Um, and so it, it does a few things. It, it immediately gives, um, sets in motion a process by which, um, Tom Joyce will become our acting city manager. That's the way that that's outlined, and, um, staff will recognize that, and that actually occurs tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM. And so that process gets started. The next thing that it does is, um, so that releases Harold from his day-to-day duties of doing the role that he's been doing for us for around five years. The next step that it does then is it sets a termination point on the 23rd of August where Harold's, um, pay for his position, um, as well as his remaining obligations, which are, are minor, that are just to make sure that information is communicated to, to Mr. Joyce and other department heads, that we're very clear about how that transition goes. It sets his benefit end date, um, for things like health insurance at the end of the month. It sets an end date for a bunch of the things that needed to happen one way or the other. It also, you know, again, as a, as a tertiary good guy all the way down the line, it saves the city about $10,000, um, in some, in some of the fees towards the end, including his, uh, his pay during that time and a little bit of benefit costs. And so on the flip side, what it allows Harold to do is to make sure that his life is in order as best he can, and he's able to, to move forward. And so, um, just a, a couple of things that I will say, Harold, um, you know, I, I, I met you just as you got to Minot. Um, it was, uh, I was glad to see you come in, I remember a couple of conversations we had right as you, right as you arrived in our city. Um, gotten to know you much better over the last year. And, um, I've appre, I've appreciated our relationship. I felt that while there were times when we looked at things different, it was always respectful, and it always worked, we worked well together. And, you know, I guess just as the first member of council saying it, I just want to say thanks. You know, you've spent a good portion of your life here, a good portion of your family's life here, of, you know, formative years as they're moving through schooling things and things like that. And, and so I just wanted to say thank you for giving us that over these five years and for, um, you know, what I feel is leading a, a good ship that was headed in the right direction is you always say at the direction and speed of council, right? And I think maybe that direction and speed has changed a little bit over the last year, and, and that is different, but you didn't. You still did your job and you did it well each day. And so, um, you know, I think this is a good way for us to, to both move on to the next chapters and what we've got coming. And so, you know, thank you for the, the time you put in over the weekend to make sure that this worked and we had it ready for tonight, because I think, I think it is in the best interest of everybody. So I just wanted to say thank you for that and for what you've done for the city of
Further discussion on the motion? Uh, I, I, um, I guess I am wondering, um, since, since the, um, since the motion includes, uh, directing human resources to move toward, forward with city manager recruitment efforts, do we want to, um, identify that any more specifically, how that should occur?
I, I do think that that would be a good idea, and Kelly, if you wouldn't mind, um, I, I'll lay out my thoughts on that, um, and certainly other council members can, can kind of, can kind of talk about that. One of the things that I think we have to balance as we think about this process, and this comes a little bit from a discussion that Mark and I had with, with Harold, um, over the weekend as we were headed towards this, we have to balance two things here. One, I think that we've got a good stable of potential candidates right within our city organization, okay? We have an assistant city manager, and there's been discussions, you see the social media stuff about why in the world did we hire an assistant city manager? Well, tomorrow morning, we have an assistant city manager assuming the role of city manager in the interim, and that's a good thing for us. Okay, it allows us some continuity in where we're headed. Now, whether that continues forever in exactly that format, that's up to the council to decide. But Kelly, um, so we, we have to balance that side with the idea that, okay, who is the best candidate out there, right? Is there, uh, you know, Harold has, has, has moved from city to city, he's moving on to one in Washington at this point, um, there are opportunities out there. And so Kelly, what, if you would, could you just tell us a little bit about what you would envision that would look like and, and what, what you think our options are?
Sure, thank you, Mayor Janser, uh, Alderman Blessom. Our intention, as we've talked about this over the last couple of weeks, is to handle the recruiting internally. I strongly believe our team can handle it. There's a multitude of resources internally, uh, great internal candidates, we can also use, uh, websites, there's the ICMA, we can reach out, we've got contacts with them to post where city managers often will be searching for new careers. So I, I feel strongly that we would like an attempt to find the appropriate candidate internally within, you know, start the process, and if within 30 days you're not seeing what you're looking for, we can move to a third-party outsourcing recruitment, as you did for my role, uh, for Chief Fry's role. But I strongly believe that with the tools and resources that exist, we can get you a candidate pool internally within about 30 days.
Okay. So, um, if, uh, so we look at a, like a 30-day window to, um, sort of see what kind of results there are, and then if, um, we need to use an outside service, then you would come back to us and identify that cost.
Mayor Janser, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Mayor Janser, if I could, just, just to put some dates on that, um, so it, I'd like to amend my motion just to direct Kelly to report to us at the September 2nd meeting on how that's going, that's just short of 30 days, and you can give us an update then and, and give us a recommendation on, on whether we need to change anything.
Are we doing that as a friendly amendment, where we want to ask?
I, I brought the motion, so that's mine, so if there's, if, if, if the second's okay, we should be okay.
And there's no objection across the House? No. Okay.
That's agreeable then. Okay. Thank you. Uh, okay, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Mayor Janser.
Alderman Olson.
Thank you. I will vote to, uh, approve this this evening because it does give City Manager Stewart some, some more time to transition into- because it does give City Manager Stewart some more time to transition into his new position. But I will say that I am greatly distressed by the way that this took place. This did not need to be rushed. And so allowing for all of us to have been part of that conversation would have been the right way to do this. It did not need to take place immediately and be put on this agenda. And so I would strongly encourage anyone who believes that something like this is that imperative, that you put it on agenda for all of us to discuss in the future.
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Alderman Blessam.
I certainly understand the sentiment. That's why I mentioned at the beginning that there are times when our open meeting laws actually do not allow that to happen. And so what I would suggest is that this motion right now is that discussion and truly the only way legally that that can be done. And so the only alternative we would have had would have been to have an item tonight that would have directed staff to prepare an agreement that we would have had to act on at a future meeting. Now, you could make the case that we could have done that through a special meeting, and that was possible. At the same time, the best way for us to take advantage of the situation that we have in front of us was to move through that quickly. At this point, the motion's still open. We have not voted. It's open to amendments. If there's a decision, if there's something different that needs to be done, right now is the time to do that, and we're able to bring those amendments right now.
Further discussion? Seeing none, let's go ahead and cast our votes.
The motion passed unanimously.
That brings us to item seven. Okay, yeah. So I guess before we move on, I would like to make a presentation to Harold. I want to say that you have served well and very appreciative of your service to the city, your involvement in the community, and your sense of humor and work ethic. And so we want to give you something to remind you of Minot when you're over West. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to make a few comments. I'll keep it brief because I made most of my statement in my resignation letter at the last meeting. Again, I just want to thank the community of Minot. You know, my experience with Minot started back when my father was stationed here at the Air Force Base. Went to elementary school at South Prairie Elementary for a little bit. And this was one way, at least a part of my career, that I could give back to the community to help make me who I am today. And I appreciate the council that hired me and the council mayors that I've served with. But more importantly, I want to thank the staff for the great job that you've done. We've really kind of pushed the throttle over the last several years and made a lot of changes and helped put this organization and this community in a better direction. And I wish this community and this council and the staff nothing but the best going forward and that you make Minot what you envision it to be. And tonight's been a good example of hearing some strong opinions on different sides of issues. And I think this conversation is healthy, and I'm grateful that these discussions are happening publicly because I don't know how much those were happening as frequently prior to me being here. And I think that's a sign that we've increased transparency, we've increased engagement, and it's beginning to involve the people and those opinions are coming out, and I think that's great. I think that's healthy. But again, I just want to say thank you to everyone that I've had the opportunity to work with. This is a bittersweet moment. I've had a lot of people ask me if I'm excited. And half of me, yes, is excited, and half of me is heartbroken to leave. I find it ironic that the mayor thanked me for my sense of humor. I don't know how often I've put that out there. But again, just a sincere thank you. And I wanted this process to be as amicable as I could make it. And this community's been through a lot, particularly over the last year, and I didn't want to add to that. But as I said last time in my resignation letter, this move is both personal and professional. And I am excited about the next opportunities, but I will definitely miss many people here. Many people are in the audience today who have been friends and colleagues, and we've been through some tough times together. But we've also been, more importantly, through some great times together. The things that we've succeeded in with the rail port, the CTE. We're setting in a new building right now that I had a goal in my career to never have my name on a plaque in a building. And here in Minot, I have it on too, in City Hall and Fire Station Five. So I broke that goal. And, but I'm proud to have my name here on the positive things that we've done together. And I hope that it continues sincerely. And if I can ever be of any help or assistance, I'm happy to do it, but I'm confident that in the quality of staff that we have, that you're not going to need my help. You're going to be just fine. So again, a heartfelt thank you.
Thank you, Harold. That brings us to item seven, which is personal appearances. And let me just quickly review the public comment policy that was recently adopted so that we're all clear on what the rules of engagement are. First thing is, a speaker card or note is required. They're available on the table and on the podium. You are required to provide your first and last name, address, and the topic, and those go to the city clerk prior to speaking. Missing information from the speaker card disqualifies the individual from speaking at the meeting. Each individual will be allotted five minutes to make comments. The individual will be notified when their five minutes have expired. The five-minute time limit may be extended by a majority vote of the city council. All comments must address the topic identified on the speaker card, be pertinent to the city of Minot, and fall under the authority of the city council, be directed to the council as a whole. Comments may not be defamatory, abusive, harassing, or unlawful. They may not include information that is exempt or confidential under North Dakota Open Records law and interference with, and may not interfere with the orderly conduct of the meeting. Individuals will not have access to the city's audiovisual technology, other than the microphone, obviously. And individuals may not yield their allotted time to another person. So with that, this is public appearances or public comment policy, public comment. If you wish to... Ma'am?
Acting Mayor Janzer, did I hear you correctly that I'm not able to use the audiovisual?
That's correct.
Okay.
And ma'am, just the reason for that is that there are concerns with regard to copyright material and, you know, not having any idea what somebody might plug in.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I think the way that we've looked at that is we could have it pre-submitted, correct? If there's something?
Sure. If somebody has something that they want to present and give it to us in advance, it certainly could be approved and used, yes.
Given that this is the first day that this is in process, may I submit a picture that doesn't have any people in it? That's location or is?
It's just a picture of a place?
Yes. I, I understand. I wasn't aware of the rules, the laws that were set in place before today. It's, I'll be fine without it.
Okay. Yeah, this was adopted last month.
And you need a comment card? I can grab one.
Do you have a card filled out, ma'am?
I do. I do. It's on the table.
Okay. We'll get it. Thank you.
Acting Mayor Janzer, council members, what will the council do to make sure that ADA requirements are being met? July tenth, but the second time in one week, I addressed with the city engineer's office the encroachment of the private construction barrier at Citizens Alley making it unsafe to pass. There was no need for it to be there other than for it to be seen. I passed by there two to four times a day. Later that morning, Ryan Ackerman approached me as I passed Citizens Alley. Annoyed, he said, "Just call me if there's an issue. I'm the one that can fix it." I told him that after addressing it the first time, that I thought that it was handled. Being an engineer, I thought that you would know what the ADA requirements are. He said, "I do." I addressed the sidewalk one inch change in level, being unsafe or entering and exiting Citizens Alley. Another ADA requirement violation, making it unsafe to traverse the sidewalk. It's not fixed. I addressed both the bathroom door Citizens Alley would use not meeting ADA requirements. He said, "It's a fifteen-minute fix." He started getting short with me. He said, "Billy, I'm not the bad guy here." ADA requirements are a federal law, not a code article that is debatable. July tenth, Citizens Alley became open to the public, not meeting ADA requirements for occupancy with no handrail, guardrail for the ADA ramp that wraps the fountain, the water fountains, with a ledge greater than six inches. Upon that, the safety risk of the ledge with no fixed barrier, I believed it was intended to not be required to have one. For three weeks until yesterday, August third, there was no fixed barrier for safety. It still doesn't meet ADA requirements. This is an egregious safety issue that shows negligence. How did this pass an inspection for occupancy? Assigned state Citizens Alley and its affiliates are not responsible for accidents. Use at your own risk. Assigned states open to the public from eight AM to ten PM. No one anticipated the 2011 flood, but here we are watching a flood wall split the city, decimate parks due to poor planning and inspections. Citizens Alley is run by the nonprofit Locomotives. Jessica Ackerman is the director of Locomotives. Citizens Alley sits between two Axel Group buildings. Ryan Ackerman is the founder of Axel Group, real estate investment company. He is the CEO, president of Ackerman Eschbold, working closely with the city, providing architecture, engineering, construction, and consulting. He is the chair on the executive board of the EDC. He is the administrator for the Suresh River Joint Board Construction for the flood wall. Construction has failed to meet ADA requirements for safety and accessibility. It has failed to meet ADA requirements for equal access and enjoyment, making production a priority. The trails on the north side of the river are not complete for equal access and enjoyment, but open for all, but not safe for all. I heard last week the flood wall construction is ahead of schedule. Construction did not meet ADA requirements or safety, or make safety a priority, making economic development a priority. In the same way Ryan Ackerman and Citizens Alley made economic development a priority, opening July tenth for the first event scheduled, not meeting ADA requirements. When Brian Billingsley, was the Economic Development Administrator, as he is still, said that City Hall would not open without meeting ADA requirements. It opened May first, 2023, not meeting ADA requirements. Art space loss was given occupancy by the city in 2013, not meeting ADA requirements for parking. And the ADA push button, an ADA push button was never wired until 2025 to be used. What will this, what will this council do to make sure that ADA requirements are being met? How will you keep me safe? I'm asking city council to hire a third-party contractor to oversee ADA requirements for planning and inspections. Thank you.
Public appearances. Next speaker is Josiah Royce.
Reset the time, please. I was not up here yet. Thank you. All right. As you know, my name is Josiah Royce. I had no idea we're doing this in order now. That's interesting. Before I start, I got to say, thank you. I'm glad we got to clap for Harold and his time in service here. I know that one of the most recent times I was here, clapping was discouraged and basically outlawed. And that's why I wanted to mention, there's other people that would like to come up here and talk about the same thing I'm here to talk about today, but, you know, they feel discouraged in even doing so in the sense that there's all these little rules, there's all these little things that they're afraid of getting in trouble for. So I know you guys have collectively all said a time or two that, you know, people should, you know, come talk to us about issues and stuff, but maybe they don't feel quite free to do it when free speech is so hampered. You might have some kind of technicality away getting around it, that you're not violating the First Amendment, but you're sure as heck not encouraging it. I want that to be very well understood. So I'm here to talk about fluoride in the water. The city of Fargo has a reverse osmosis water system. They have award-winning, cleanly, good-tasting water, and they've had it for decades, like thirty, forty years. And here we are talking about public safety, this, that, and the other. I would consider that a public safety issue. Unsafe, unclean water that's been proven to be a neurotoxin, fluoride being added, chlorine being added. The water's not safe. I know people that have been gone from Minot for years, come back and dump their coffee out first thing because the water mixed with the coffee is so freaking bad that they can taste the difference. Now, here, we might have gotten used to it, but that's something that I think needs to be top and first priority, certainly beyond any kind of special interest programs, certainly before additional police and firefighters. I'm yet to hear an argument why we need more police and firefighters. I'm yet to see a nine-one-one emergency where they just can't get there in time because, you know, we're so busy arresting so many people. I don't see that. I see cops going in duos and trios down Broadway looking for seatbelt violations, tinted windows, and you name it. More petty things that are not doing the community any harm. Meanwhile, the taxes that we pay are doing us a great deal of harm, especially because they're not going towards things that are more necessary and needed, like a good, clean water system. Minot's water has been, I've had people that tell me they test it, and it's like, we shouldn't even be drinking this. It's absolutely poisonous. It's not good for the skin or hair either. That being said, I wish you guys had been able to come out. I know you guys heard about Sheriff Mac coming to town. I brought him in to speak, and that was... I'm glad that Alderman Fuller got to come and see Sheriff Mac speak. I wish the rest of you had. But on this health issue of poison and stuff, next time, I'm going to bring you guys, or I'm going to email in advance some stuff about Fargo's water system versus the water that we have. It needs to be looked into very heavily. I cannot, I cannot overstate the importance of clean water. I mean, even the dishes we wash stink, if you know the difference, if you can tell the difference. It's not good. I've mentioned before that I'd leave for months at a time for work and come back, and it's like, I can feel and taste the difference. I feel the difference in my skin and hair. These are priorities. These are public interests. These are things that would serve and benefit all of the people in Minot. I don't see a need and a shortage when it comes to police and fire and things like that. Public safety, water is absolutely an issue. And speaking of cleaning things up, I need to clear the air about something. And speaking of cleaning things up, I need to clear the air about something. Five years ago, when Mayor Sitma was sitting at the other location and put the gay pride flag up on City Hall. And I went and spoke out against it. And somehow, since then, and including then, but especially in recent months, and you know why, people have been trying to spin something the complete reverse. If I say I like the color black to wear like I am right now, that does not mean that I hate it. So let me say this. I condemned California bill SB 145. And somehow, in the last few months, as a means of bringing down my character, since nobody can argue logically with the constitutional platform, nobody can argue with what's wrong with the things I'm proposing. Instead, they're trying to say that I'm a freaking pedophile. Instead, they're saying that I'm advocating for age of consent laws to be lowered. This is beyond free speech. It's not free speech anymore when you're, when you're accusing somebody of illegal things like that. This is the sort of thing that's gonna get somebody sued, for the record. Facebook, Minot whiners and complainers. That is a low IQ demographic spewing things for the uninformed voter. And you will not hear the end of it yet. But furthermore, I want to offer a $2,000 cash reward for anybody that can find any evidence of me advocating to ban age of consent laws. $2,000 cash. That being said, it's gonna be a very interesting 24 hours. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you all.
Next speaker is Lydia Gassel. I don't know if I spoke, pronounced that correctly, ma'am, or? Okay.
Good evening, interim Mayor Janzer and councilman. My name is Lydia Gessley, and I need to provide public notice to the Minot City Council. This is in accordance with the USCS Rules of Civil Procedure, as well as Rule Seventeen and Rule Twenty of the United States Supreme Court. The Constitution of the United States has the overarching requirement that every state must follow. I do not think anyone will deny that. The states cannot enact their own alternative legislation substituted for the guarantees of the Constitution of the United States. That would mean that the state laws are more powerful than the Constitution. Clause one of Amendment Five, the United States Constitution, says, "No person shall be held to answer for a capital or otherwise infamous crime unless on presentment or grand jury." However, the state of North Dakota has enacted its own alternative legislation that permits the prosecution attorney or police officer to charge by information and not by indictment. This is unconstitutional. An emolument violation is when you pay a public officer to break the law. The Constitution has two areas to enforce this. The one is Article One, Section Ten, where it says that no state shall create a law that shall impair the obligation of contracts. Police officers, prosecutors, judges are all under the contract. A contract to perform that's based upon the oath or affirmation that they took. The contract parameters are defined within the Constitution of the United States. When the states enact a law that directs their agents to disobey the law, the Constitution of the United States, that would violate Article One, Section Ten. Now, the Fourteenth Amendment is under, that is, the other place that you'll find the reinforcement of this issue. That is where it says, "No state shall create or enforce any law that shall abridge the privileges or immunities of the United States citizen." The privileges and immunities of the United States citizens are in, at a minimum, those enumerated within the Bill of Rights, the first ten amendments. They cannot be impaired, and thus, the state of North Dakota has enacted a law in its inferior constitution that is permitting public officials and law enforcement, whom you pay, to violate the Constitution of the United States. As a result, there is an inordinate amount of people currently imprisoned in the state of North Dakota illegally and unconstitutionally. Tannawa Downeys is litigating this issue in the United States Supreme Court, and I'm here to notify you that if you continue to pay public officials to break the law, there can be criminal sanctions that could come from that. We don't want to go that path, but officials must be made aware that paying people disobey the law is an emolument violation. It is illegal. It is unconstitutional. I'm asking you honorable individuals to please look at Clause One of Amendment Five and confirm that I'm saying the, what is true. Then direct your public officials to act in a lawful, constitutional manner, consistent with the obligations that are codified in the Constitution of the United States of America. I have a notice that I would like to put onto the record. Thank you very much, and God bless.
Our next speaker is Lisa Hermansilo.
Mayor Janzer and members of the council, I actually wasn't planning on coming up and speaking tonight, but I just felt the need to show some appreciation. I wholeheartedly respect those who step up to run for office, especially for the special election for Minot's next mayor. It takes time, commitment, and energy to run a campaign, and this is obviously a very important election for, for us. Thank you, Mayor Janzer, for filling in during this time. You have done a tremendous job. I also want to genuinely thank Harold Stewart for all the work that you've done for, for us. We're all very sad to see you go, but I wish you and your family the best in your next adventure. And I'm grateful for your comments tonight about being willing to stay connected and help where we need it. So thank you for that. I've also been really impressed with the efforts, uh, with the city's social media pages for keeping residents informed on events and construction updates. Uh, personally, I've just found it really, really, um, helpful, and so I just wanna compliment their work on that. Minot has been through a lot over the last several months, and I'm really hopeful and confident in our path going forward despite future transitions and previous challenges. Lastly, I'd like to urge and encourage all eligible voters to please get out and vote if you have not yet, and to encourage your friends, your neighbors, your coworkers to do the same. Beyond the race, I also just wanna thank each and every member of the, of the council for all of your work. Again, through all the challenges that we have been through, I just really appreciate all of your time and, and your work. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, that completes the, uh, speaker cards that we have, so we will move on. Miscellaneous and discussion items. The first item is the MAC EDC Biannual Presentation.
I believe I sent in a presentation?
Yeah, she'll pull it up.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Mayor Janzer and members of City Council, thanks for having us here this evening to present our, um, mid-year report, semi-annual report on the progress and work that the Chamber EDC has been doing since the beginning of the year. I wanna call out that I have Mark Lyman, our Economic Development Specialist, with us this evening, along with Kelly Roselli Sullivan, which is our Workforce Development Specialist and Military Liaison. Next slide, please. Unless I have control. I got it. Um, so I always start off as far as kind of with our mission and vision, but we really do serve to be the go-to organization to, for the business community to drive key initiatives that build and strengthen our economy, and we're doing a lot of work in that space. I do wanna call out our Board of Directors. We have a volunteer Board of Directors that serves and really sets the guidance for the strategy and direction that our organization goes. This evening, I am joined by Ryan Ackerman, our Board Chair. Also joining us is Beth Feldner with Excel Energy. I know Alderman Blessam, she's served on your Economic Development Committee, and I think you have a report coming up next. We also have John Kutch with Trinity Health and Brent Lones with Hess Corporation here this evening. It is these volunteers that really drive the key initiatives, along with the volunteers that really support our organization. We have hundreds of volunteers that support us each and every day, that allow us to execute the mission and vision for the Chamber EDC. I'll call it our team. I won't go line by line, but we have a small team, really, in essence, that's tackling some big initiatives for the community. And then I do wanna, um, give a nod to the team over at Motor Vehicle. We do have a contract with the North Dakota Department of Transportation to administer the title work and provide that service to the Minot area. And that is, that team is managed by Lacey Coleman, and they're, um, over at Arrowhead. So when you do your title work here in town, that actually supports our organization. So that makes up the team. As always, you guys probably know our five key pillars by now, but we do refer to them because they really are the driving force of what our organization does. Economic development, community development, workforce development, and military support are all supported by the city of Minot in some fashion. And the Member Investor Services is really gonna be your, um, chamber function, where we're providing those type of services to our member investors. I know many of you, um, I won't go into an update on the Member Investor side this evening, but we did provide a written report that gives an overview on all of the, all five of our key pillars. And one of the things that we do in the Member Investor side is obviously educating, and I know a number of you have participated in, whether it be legislative forums that we host through the session, or pushing on information when it comes to candidate forums as well. So under Economic Development, I just kinda wanna start with some of the bigger picture items that we've been working on at the beginning of this year to, to date. We have a couple of large macroeconomic efforts that are underway. Obviously, the Logistics Park and Intermodal Service is something you continue to hear us talking about, but there's a lot of work still being done in that space, and then I'll give some updates on that next. But the other thing is natural gas solutions. We are working diligently to bring natural gas to Minot, North Dakota. And we obviously know that that's not only a game changer for the state, but it also is a game changer for development projects. If we look at natural gas, it's something that we've heard the state talk about over and over, of how do we build this pipeline to bring natural gas here? And frankly, what's crazy about it is, it's one of our biggest barriers to large-scale development projects is access to natural gas. And we know just a few miles down the road, we have an abundance of it. The state of North Dakota is investing some dollars in this, not specifically for the pipeline that we're working on, but, um, to build another pipeline, and I know there's some discussions that are underway right now. The work that we're doing is continuing to move forward, and we're optimistic that we're, um, moving in the right direction to build a pipeline from Tioga to Minot. There'll be more to come on that as we continue to work that effort. Um, when we look at the intermodal facility, that is something that we're very proud of. It really has positioned Minot as a strategic location for logistics. We have, um, our ag commodities, our probably invaluable ag is one of our biggest users, and we're shipping to twenty-one different countries. We have an agreement with the city of Minot, and obviously, this is something that was a, a challenge to get off the ground, but, um, we're very happy to say in this first half of the year, we passed our third year of the Business Incentive Agreement audit, which means that we're delivering what we said we would do with the number of shipping containers that are coming out of the site, and then also the jobs and salaries that were tied to our BIA. We have a five-year BIA with the city, and so we're, we've just passed our third year audit in the first half of the year. When we started, um, this in 2022, we were looking at like twelve trains, a train a month out of the facility. Last year alone, we moved thirty-four trains, which is over seven thousand containers, and we're on track to continue to grow that. Uh, the rail operator is making additional investments there, and we have a lot of great opportunities that are underway with the, with that service. When we look at the primary sector growth opportunities, just to the north of the intermodal site, we actually own what we call the Logistics Park of North Dakota. And we have had two very large, um, primary sector opportunities that we've been working, um, on. One specifically tied to the Logistics Park of North Dakota, and one in Berthold, and we'll continue to work those efforts. Obviously, as you guys know, um, economic development projects take place year over year, and these large-scale projects don't happen overnight. But we're getting closer on a couple of large-scale projects that really could have an impact on this, this area. And then last month, I know you had an opportunity to hear from Eric Barch with AGT Foods, and the city of Minot approved the last magic fun request. They continue to invest into the Extrusion Center, and we're so proud to be able to support that through the resources that the city provides. Their expansion there, um, will open up additional lines, and they will be the largest, um, gluten-free pasta manufacturer in North America. And they're located right here in Minot. We've supported and worked with them, and they've invested hundreds of million dollars into this community. If you look at the other, um, area that we kind of support, it's not just the large-scale projects, but it's also the work that we do to support entrepreneurs in our community. And Minot is absolutely fabulous when it comes to entrepreneurs. We have such an ecosystem of small businesses supporting other small businesses, the community rallying behind those that are willing to kind of get behind an idea or a vision. So through our Startup Minot program, which is a program we started through the Chamber EDC, we, uh, Mark wrapped up his cohort for the spring, where we train, do a ten-week course for, could be an entrepreneur with an idea, or somebody that's been in business and wants the additional resources. And we step them through those ten weeks to really kind of help them grow and support their business. And then we provide monthly networking events as well to bring that entrepreneur, um, ecosystem together. We do a business retention and expansion, interviews and data collection, and we do that through one-on-one interviews. I know that was something the Economic Development Committee looked at, kind of the role and what we do there. That's something that we feel is critically important, to hear from the businesses, what are their barriers to growth? Are they looking to grow? Are they stagnant? Are they, um, are there workforce challenges? And we take and quantify that data together. We don't attribute back the comments to a specific business. But we are on track to meet our contractual agreement, uh, goals with our B R and E program. And we do provide the reports. I believe that's in, in the report that we provided to you as well. Just the data that comes from that, and we're more than happy to answer questions on that at any time. It's really good information, though, because we're talking one-on-one with key businesses that drive our business economy. And then when we look at regional growth and, uh, growth and partnerships, we have a couple that we've called out here, but frankly, there's way too many to list that we've been working the last six months. Um, when we look at the work, I'll just maybe call out one of them, for example. With the Department of Ag, when we partner and work with them, when, um, we're supporting, like, for example, the Regional Livestock Planning Grant, what we're trying to do is look at the global market in that case. We know that there's, um, a need for proteins to reach out to global markets. We've seen intermodal sites, for example, at Fremont, Nebraska, which is another site our rail operator owns and functions. And we've seen that with the development of, um, the, the livestock around that, that they've been able to increase their volume and do more, not only for their area, but for, um, getting commodities out to the global markets. That's just one example of some of the things that we're supporting. Obviously, we work closely with the city of Minot on a number of efforts as well. And I think I just turned it off. Okay. So workforce development. This was an initiative that the city of Minot contracted and put on our plate on a, a city council meeting a few years ago. There really wasn't a regional leader leading workforce development, so we took that on, and we brought on a position to fulfill, fulfill that work. As you guys know, workforce challenges are something we're talking about from a statewide standpoint. We have more jobs than people, and frankly, we need to continue to innovate and think differently in how we're going to attract workforce and keep individuals in our community. We rolled out a Wayfinder program, which is, um, a talent attraction kind of portal. But really what that does is it allows us to welcome newcomers and potential newcomers into our community through, um, an ambassador-type program where we're connecting community champions, with whether it be a young airmen moving here, an individual looking to relocate here in the healthcare system. We have a portal in place that is connecting our community champions with these individuals to showcase all the great things that we have here in our community, and work to keep them in, in our community as well. And it's been a really successful program. We've actually had relocations happen through that program. We did receive and finished out our contract with the Department of Commerce this first half of the year with the Regional Workforce Impact Program Grant. The Chamber EDC received $250,000 to help us market the Minot area. And so we just completed that state grant contract and, um, submitted our final report to the state there. When we look at strategic partnerships, obviously, there's a lot of, um, efforts underway. Thank you to Elderwoman Olson for serving in this, not only on our workforce committee, but for chairing the childcare committee that's through the city of Minot. When, with these efforts, we're, um, really working hard to innovate and also make sure the resources that are available are getting out to the communities so we can help. And we continue to work with developers looking to build out childcare, but that still is a workforce challenge that we're, we're, we're tackling. And then if you look at the state of North Dakota, they continue to be a partner in this space. They have programs like the Find the Good Life, and we kind of mirror and, um, almost create our own funnel to those state programs because we know that they're, they have a broader reach, and we're really hyper-focused on the Minot area. Then if you look at the work that we're doing in higher education, we advocated for and supported Minot State University and Dakota College of Bodnar, not only through the legislative session, which they were successful in moving forward with the facility on the corner of Berdick and Broadway, that they'll increase some of their programming. But we recently supported in our record for additional programs that not only that not only Minnet State is going to look to offer, but Dakota College of Botno. And as we start to think through some of the workforce needs that we're going to have with major projects like Sentinel, for example, on the military side, we know that we need to work with our higher education partners, some of the trades and other places to make sure that we're teeing up the right kind of employees to be able to support those large scale projects. And then with that, this first half of the year, we did complete a digital childcare resource guide. I believe Lisa and the team shared that out with city council earlier. We're in the process right now of working with Minnet Air Force Base to do a relocation guide. And then we do have one that we completed last year for relocating to Minnet. Our Task Force 21 falls under our military pillar. We do a lot to support military. Minnet isn't Minnet without Minnet Air Force Base. And I'm only going to focus our presentation tonight on the things that are really more tied to Task Force. We have a military affairs committee. We have a number of different efforts, partnerships to do military appreciation events. But really, the, the city's funding goes directly to the strategic side, which is our Task Force 21. With that, Minnet is still home to the Barksdale Trophy. I know you guys showcased it here at City Hall, right when it came home to Minnet. It is something we're very proud of because what that does is it spotslight the community of Minnet and the hard work that our citizens, businesses do to support military at all levels. And then earlier this year, Minnet was recognized as a great American defense community at the Association of Defense Communities National Conference in Washington DC. And why that is such a huge honor, again, it's the work of the community that really is spotlighted through this effort. EDC, or the Association of Defense Communities, in 10 years has only recognized 50 communities across the United States, and that's across all branches. We're not talking just Air Force, it's all branches of military. This year, Minnet was one of three communities that was recognized. So we're very proud of that because it allows us to, sometimes we get into the weeds and don't celebrate the wins. But frankly, we have a lot of wins in this community. We have a lot of great things going on. And you can ask anyone, you hear our commander say it every day. It's not about the awards, but frankly, this community cares and it's genuine and real. So it's nice for us to be able to bring back that recognition to the communities, the businesses and individuals that support military at the highest level. And then when we look at some of the strategic and community engagements that we do, we had 53 in-person and virtual strategic engagements the first half of the year. We continue to do Right Start, which is actually a chamber program. But I do want to call out, we've had 300 new airmen. When they first come to Minnet, we are asked to provide a community overview and they're required to go through the Right Start program. So we have an opportunity to showcase our community and spotlight all the great things about it when they first arrive. We raised over $110,000 through our Prairie Warrior Auction. Again, it's not anything that the city funded, but I do want to call it out because we're doing things like sending airmen home for the holidays. Chamber EDC will start booking tickets again in August. And the fact that half of those proceeds go to that effort is just a huge thank you to the community as a whole that steps up each and every day. And then if you look at some of the other things that we do, not, it's not just about the appreciation events, but the Honor Flight from North Dakota has always been out of Bismarck. For the first time, we brought that here to Minnet. And I want to thank Jennifer and the team at the airport for helping us work on that. But what an amazing experience to be able to thank our veterans and bring them here. And again, they don't go out looking for new communities to do it. It's because we're in the arena and working these efforts that they choose to do that kind of event here in Minnet. And then obviously, one of our biggest focuses is the Sentinel preparation. Not only does the city of Minnet support us with our Task Force 21 funding, but we also receive support from the state of North Dakota. The state of North Dakota, this last legislative session allocated $600,000 for the biennium to help us not only with the Sentinel preparation, but also to host our Nuclear Triad Symposium in Washington DC. And then in non-legislative years, our goal and intent is to host the North Dakota Nuclear Triad Symposium here in Minnet. During the legislative years, we brought for the first time a briefing to the state. So we brought in General Connor to give legislators, Governor Armstrong's team, state leaders and the cabinet members an update on this program. If you guys recall from the reports from 2024, we were on hold. There was a congressional breach with the Numa Kuti breach. So a lot of the activity that we had planned for the Sentinel program kind of was on hold. Now we're kind of moving full forward or full force forward. So we've stood up a Sentinel Working Group, which is chaired by Cassidy Jumpstead, one of our board members, and also a Task Force 21 member. We're working with the city of Minnet closely. Our Ward County is a strategic partner. And so are the other counties and townships that cover the 8,500 square miles that encompass the missile sites that Minnet Air Force Base has. The Minnet Air Force Base stood up their SATAF office, which is their Sentinel office. And that happened in June of this year. So we're working very hard on the Sentinel program. There's a lot of workforce needs tied to it. And obviously, too, I think we've shared it with you, but there is a, this is a forward looking piece. But there is going to be the first Sentinel Town Hall that'll take place on August 26 at Minnet State University at 5:30, and I'd certainly encourage you all to attend. It'll be the first time that we're actually holding a town hall because we're moving forward with everything at this time. So with that, I've covered kind of some of the other bullets here. I do want to call out the other part, too, is we are working with the city of Minnet really closely. I know you guys approved at your last meeting, the OLDCC, or the Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation Grant Proposal. What that's going to do, it's going to allow us to update the Joint Land Use Study and the, which is now called a compatibility use study. This used to be a resiliency grant with the new administration in DC. It's called readiness and it's hyper focused on supporting our communities. We know that we're going to need OLDCC to be a strategic partner of ours as we work through the Sentinel preparation. So this first grant is really going to tee up a lot of the work that is coming down the pipeline for the community. And I want to thank the city of Minnet, especially Dave Lakefield and the finance team. They were absolutely fabulous to work with a lot of other partners to help us get that grant actually out the door today, the grant request. And there is no dollars from a matching standpoint. It's, it can be matched by the time and resources that we put into that. And then when we look at, I always call out the economic impact of Minnet Air Force Base, just to call out why we spend some time in this space. It's not only to help our friends and neighbors, but it's, the economic impact is over $650 million. That's for fiscal year 2024. And we know that that's up 30 million dollars over the year prior. And we're going to continue to see that grow as we work through these major modernization projects. With that, I'll pause and stand for any questions. But again, I want to thank you for your support and I can answer questions. We did submit a thing about a 35-page report. So if there's a lot more detail to it, I just wanted to cover a high level, some of the activity from the first half of the year.
Any questions for Breka? Seeing none, you, you covered it all.
Sounds good. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That brings us to item 8.2, which is the receiving the recommendations from the Economic Development Plan Review Committee. I guess that was an attachment that was a part of the agenda. Is there any, Alderman Blessam, you chaired that committee.
Yep. So I'll take, if I could, Mr. Mayor, I'll take the, I'll take the bulk of the, I guess, the, the report back. And then Paul will certainly add as he joined me on the committee. So just, just to give a little bit of background, during the budget discussions last fall, I brought a motion and the council approved it to create what we called an Economic Development Plan Review Committee. There are two council members that were part of it, myself and Paul. And then we had five community members that, that spent the grueling hours through the last nine months to get us to the point where we are today. And that included Jordan Nelson, Tyler Neither, Justin Hammer, Melinda Howe, and Beth Felner. So, you know, I thanked them at the end of our process, but I'll publicly thank them again today for the time that they put in the thoughtful discussion that we had. We started our work in November. We met roughly twice a month through the end of May, I think is where we ended up. And we brought together some recommendations to bring back to council. And so as a, as sort of a process for what we can work through here, what, what the intention is tonight, or at least my intention after chairing the committee, is to get this in front of the, of the council tonight, what the thoughts were, what the recommendations were, what the bullets were. And then to, to take a few more steps in future meetings. One of those steps, I think, needs to be some public comment, including from the committee members themselves. And so I'd like to see us do that at a, at a future meeting, something that we can put on the agenda. And then also hear from the public, you know, the, those that watched it, those that are reading the report can give us some of that feedback, some of the feedback we talked about a little bit earlier tonight on, on what this means to members of the community and how they view how, not only their tax dollars, but how the efforts of the city and economic development are, are being taken by the citizens. And so one of the things that we did first, and we can see it on the screen if we go up to, what is economic development success? And I'm not going to go a lot into this, but one of the things that we talked about as a committee was, what does it mean for us to have success in economic development? You know, we, we talked about a few things like filling gaps, doing funding where other organizations are not, or it's not part of their scope. So, you know, as an example, we just heard from Breka and the MAC EDC team, there's a lot that they can do from their perspective on economic development. But there are, there are whole spaces where it's not appropriate for them to be involved. One example of that is they're not typically going to be involved in retail recruitment. Because their member organizations, the members that actually pay dues to the chamber, may not want them to go out and, and recruit competitors to those businesses. And so there, there are places where we can fill gaps. And you can see that on the, on the next one, restaurant and retail economic development data collection, expanding the tax base, just the types of things that we talked about, about how we find economic development success and how we measure ourselves for the programs that we put in place. So let's move to the recommendations of the committee. Now I'm going to preface this by saying this was the, these were voted on items. That's how they got on the list. They were bullets that were prepared and presented to the committee and they voted on whether they made this list or they didn't. And I'll be completely upfront and honest, I voted no on most. I have a different perspective on how economic development ought to work and, and what things we should be involved in. But there's a reason why we do this work. There's a reason why we bring community members together because it's bigger than any one council member. It's bigger than any one person. And so this is the result of that process. This, these are the bullet points that were put forward. And so these, I think we will step through one by one and, and I'll just give a little bit of commentary on those each. The first, and, and really, I think there is a reason that it's first. I know Harold throughout his time has advocated for the funding that we do to encourage the Pace and Flex Pace programs from the Bank of North Dakota because they are very good programs. And if we're going to have a state bank, this is one way that we can leverage that tool to help small business grow and, and prosper. That's at least the background of it and why that's there. And this is something that we placed a priority on in the last budget. We put a million dollars into that bucket that was meant to make sure that that's there. Now, something like Flex Pace, hopefully that means that longer term, that gets to the point where it's more of a revolving system and we don't need to continue to inject money into it. But hopefully we'll get there. The pace side of things, I think the, if I remember right, the AGT Foods, one that we approved for the magic fund funding was a pace program project. And so these are, these are things that are being utilized. And they are, you know, I'll leave success to, to everybody to, to kind of think through what that means, but they are being utilized. Second, the committee recommends that we continue the Renaissance Zone Program and that we encourage the Renaissance zoning, zone board to move districts from areas that have not utilized the program to blighted areas or entrances to our community that need improvements. So just a little bit of background here, Renaissance Zone Program is something that's created in state law. State law gives communities the ability to create Renaissance zones of, if I remember the numbers right, up to 40 blocks. You can have islands of blocks. We have typically used that around the local, the, the central business district around downtown. And what it does is it allows us to give now up to eight-year property tax breaks for businesses that are working on their buildings. And again, I'll leave it to everybody to determine what the, what the, the reality and the usefulness of those programs are. But the committee recommends that that continue, but that we, you know, we just move it around a little bit and get more people in the mix. So again, I'll leave that to the public to, to digest. Also suggested that we continue the builder's property tax exemption and homeowner's property tax exemption programs. Again, this is meant to spur development and to try to do what we can to get new housing development rolling and moving, both on the side of the builder as well as on the homeowner side, the future homeowner side, so that they're exempting those dollars from the first couple of years that that house is, is on the lot and in, and in the property tax system. Another set is additional residential developer incentives, kind of along the same lines, trying to spur more development. One of them is to consider the idea of special assessments. I've been very public about my opposition to specials. I think that it, we will saddle ourselves. And one example that I'll give right now, the, there was just a story that was done online about the area near Hoven School where we've got road construction now that we believe is being done because things weren't quite up to snuff when it was originally built. If that had been done with specials and those specials were just finishing up, we'd be in the cycle that West Fargo is in, which is, which is where just when you're finishing up with that, you get your next set of specials for the next development that's being done. The city of Minnet, we haven't done that as often and we haven't done it typically. And I think we need to stay as close to that as we can. But that is something that the, the, the committee put onto the list. And then additional developer tax credits and developer rebates are things that, that we think, or that the, the committee thought could be looked at. Facade improvement program, again, I think this is another one where the committee felt, at least with a majority, that it's worthwhile and should continue, but it should be adjusted. So at the very least, over the coming months, if we're continuing to look at facade, I think it's up to the council now to decide, is $180,000 per property the appropriate approach to facade improvement? Mandant does 30,000. So I think we want to take a look at that program and determine whether it's the right approach as we move forward. And that's, that actually is what the committee suggested that we take a look at, whether that's what percentage match it is or reducing the amount offered per application. And then also to take a look at actually sunsetting the program, if it's, if it's kind of served its purpose. You know, Breka again was up talking about MAC EDC and our partnership there. One of the suggestions was to take a look at the detail on how city of Minnet funds are spent. And so that might be something that we take a look at. Just as another aside to that, I serve on the Minnet Commission on Aging Board. I also let the, the board there know and the executive director that if we ever were to do something like this along the lines, along those lines with MAC EDC, I would expect to do it with all of the community partners that we provide dollars to. And again, this, this isn't meant to be a gotcha. It's meant to be transparent to the people that, you know, if we're sending $154,000 to the Commission on Aging, that we understand how it's being spent and what it's being used for. And then that we also look at, or also consider the continued investment in data collection and presentation of data and the package delivery. We had a bunch of discussion and, you know, Brian gave us some thoughts on that. I know Visit Minnet does a lot of work with data, just kind of coming together to work on what data we need to be looking at. And then one of the big ones, and I'll let Paul talk a lot more about this because this was something that he brought to the table, is looking at establishing a land development partnership committee. So I'll just pause on that one and let him, let him take on that one. There are some other community, or other committee notes that we've got, you know, things related to TIF programs, things that weren't necessarily direct proposals or, or things that we thought could be taking up, but just some committee, committee notes. Things that we talked about include the TIF program, prioritizing blighted program or properties first before taking a look at new development. And if it's being considered on new development, the applicant must provide a benefit to the city. Direction on recruit, retail recruitment services. And actually, there was a recommendation here that we could take action on at some point, which is removing the Community Development Advisory Board, which does not, has not been functioning for quite a while. So that would be something just to remove from the, the set of ordinances. And then other ideas, you know, Lisa's spent a lot of time and effort on the childcare world and, and those things came through. We had a presentation that you did, so thank you for that. Other communities are utilizing Department of Commerce programs and other pieces to make that happen. And are there options that Minnet would have as well? And then one other thing that we talked about and, and something that we can continue to think about going forward is, we've got a bunch of different boards that work in different spaces, whether it's the Renaissance Zone Review Board, the Magic Fund Screening Committee, the Economic Development Committee we had here. Should there be one sort of consolidated group that oversees all of it and is tasked with an ongoing discussion rather than being spun up or down for different programs as they come? And so, Mr. Mayor, that's my report. I'll hand it over to Paul so he can add his perspectives on what we talked about and in particular on the, the land development partnership committee.
Thank you, Alderman Blessam, Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Mike. Again, I think it was a good summary of what we did, the work that we did. A lot of good colorful discussions that we had throughout, throughout the committee work. Again, Mike and I have different opinions on a lot of different things. And then I think that's, that's part of where we saw the growth in there. I think the establishment or, or having this on a future agenda with not only council to bring ideas, but having, having the committee members, give them an opportunity to come and speak and give their perspectives of the work that we did. Again, I think this is, this is what economic development it is. It's, it's what do you need in your community at that given time? And it might change year to year, it might change six months, it might be workforce development, it might be childcare. It might be facade improvement program. And, and again, obviously, after, after tonight, the funding's still in place. And I think it's a healthy discussion to have ongoing, what level you fund those things? What's, what's most important in your community? Where do we need to see that effort? Where do we need to see that impact? I mean, we've, we've had heated discussions and we had some colorful discussions on the facade improvement program. But I don't think anybody can argue that there's been as much investment in development in downtown in Minnet, probably more than there has been. in development in downtown in Minnetonka, probably more than there has been in the past 50 years. And that's just a fact. You know, but again, I think arguing and, you know, discussing on the level of investment in these things is good. And I think it's one of those things, if a better idea comes along, let's look at those ideas, let's have those discussions, and let's invest and adapt to what our community needs. And that's kind of to parlay into the land development agreement. And I'll just bring up some of my notes. So this is one of the things that I introduced for the city to look at because we're seeing that, we're seeing a downturn in growth, in building, in single-family homes and affordable housing. One of the first things you learn in your Economics 101 class in college is supply and demand curves. Right now, our demand is low, our demand is high, and our supply is low, so prices are high. So I think the city taking an effort to find developable land or land that we've already invested infrastructure in, and builders and developers, and how do we bridge that gap between them? How do we make them feasible? I think there's a role for government in that. It doesn't have to, we don't, I don't want the city to be developers, I don't want the city to develop land, I don't want the city to build houses. But if there are eases in restrictions, if there's eases in density, if there's eases in setbacks, can we accommodate through that? You know, Williams County, during our time of having this committee, Williams County put in, I believe it's $25,000 infrastructure grants per lot in Williams County to spur development. Is that what I think we should do? No, but we've got to be willing to think outside the box. We've got to be willing to adapt. And I think putting, you know, putting the people in the rooms together, and, you know, we had, city staff had had meetings with Minnetonka Association of Builders, the one thing that came out of those meetings more than anything was, are you guys willing to do special assessments on new development? I'm not saying we should, I'm not saying we shouldn't, I'm saying we should have a conversation and maybe form a policy. And I think through this land development committee, I think we can have some of those healthy discussions. Are there infrastructure grants that we can do? Is there eases on regulations that we can do? Are there tax abatements, you know? And how do we get the individuals? And I've had actually a number of people within this realm, whether it's lenders, whether it's former developers, whether it's property owners, whether it's, you know, engaged community members that have reached out to me to be on this committee because they see the importance of it. We see that Minnetonka is stagnating in its growth and new development, and there's real benefit that can come out of that, just having those discussions. So again, I think Mike hit it on the head, I think this committee work is done. Now I think it's the council's responsibility to take all of this work and see what we want to come out of it. What direction do we want to go with economic development? What are we doing right? What are we doing wrong? What can we improve on? So again, I think it was a good exercise when it's all said and done, and I look forward to the future discussions.
Thank you very much. Any questions for, did you have something more, Mike, or were you?
I was just, I'm just going to bring a motion about next steps, if, when we're at that point, but if questions are.
Any other questions or any other questions on the report? All right, seeing none, what's your motion?
Yeah, what I'd like to do is bring a motion that we bring this back on the October 20 meeting, and that'll be, really what it'll do is it'll, that'll be something we publish, asking for public comment, asking for our committee members if they'd like to submit something or come in and speak on it, that we get some feedback at that meeting. And then the council, whether it's then or in subsequent meetings, can take whatever actions it feels are appropriate.
So a public hearing on the topic during?
Yes, on October 20.
Okay, so a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, we can vote. All right. Is there any other business to come before the council? Paul?
Yeah, I'll parlay it. Mike had a tabled motion, we had a tabled motion, we had some confusion on whether or not I could offer up any direction. But I'm going to direct staff to work with leadership of the police and fire to draft ballot language for a half cent sales tax to be dedicated to public safety, shifting non-salary and benefit expenses to sales tax, to reduce the property tax pressure on the general fund, and to include a sunset of five years or to align with the NAS commitment being made. And again, I'm just going to direct staff, I'd like to see that, we'll call it on the first meeting in October. And Mike mentioned that it was part of my president's letter when I was president of council because of the pressures, if Measure 4 became a reality, what it would do to the commitments that we have as a city, as well as, you know, the ongoing pressures that we have with potentially a cap. Now we've got a 3% cap, not a 0% cap, but a 3% cap. And we're seeing those, just holding the status quo, kind of quote Harold here, holding the status quo gets more expensive. And that's just a reality that we live in. So again, I think it's, I think it's something that we have to have a discussion on. We don't have to act on it, we'll see where it goes, but again, I'm going to direct staff so we can have that discussion.
I would second that.
Okay, there's motion and a second.
Does it have to be a motion, or can I just direct, just to bring an item? I'm not asking.
City Attorney, what's the rule on that?
No, you don't have to, you don't have to make a motion unless the council wants to concur in the direction that's being given to staff. We'll prepare it at your direction, though.
Okay, I just want to direct staff.
Okay, then, no motion, or you move ahead with that, I guess. Any other business to come before the council? If not, I would remind everyone that tomorrow's the day to go to the polls and vote. And with that, we're to item number nine.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Turned.